We call a meeting, do orders. Welcome everybody, we got a good house now it looks like. Got a good council too. Got a good pitch. Okay, would you call a roll call?
Brian Herring.
Here.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Here.
Mitch Magnus.
Present.
Johnny Savage.
Present.
Ryan Oswald.
Present.
Bill Boswell.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Here.
Dana Taylor.
Present.
You have a call. Thank you. At this time I would please ask you to stand and Mr. Brian Herring will leave us in our prayer and remain standing for a pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come again and do the business of this great city. We pray for wisdom and direction, Lord, there's a lot of needs and, Lord, we need your wisdom and your directions. So, Lord, we just put it into your hands, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in front of you, you should have a little bit of housekeeping. One, two of the minutes that you have at your place would be December minutes that you actually had nothing to do with, but it's actually time to approve. So, you have a minutes from the December 4th meeting, minutes from a special called meeting for December 11th, and then you also have the special call meeting for January 1st. You have actually three sets of minutes to approve.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Will that be all three minutes?
Yes.
I have a correction on the January 1st. It's nothing major, but since we're crossing our teeth and dotting our i's, under Resources and Policy Committee, there is no chairman listed.
Got that, Dana.
Okay.
Who is?
Dana Taylor.
Would you make a motion to amend?
I have a motion to amend the January 1st minutes showing a chairman under the Resources and Policy Committee as Dana Taylor.
Second. I have a motion to amend those minutes in a second. All of them favored by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Okay, we have a motion on the floor also to approve all minute. I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. Motion on the floor to approve all the minutes as amended in discussion. All of them favored by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay, we'll get into our parking reports. Normally, we do not have them report as such unless you have questions for them. Go down there to Police Department, do you have any questions written down for the Police Department?
I don't. Before we got into the situation in regards to internet security, I took a look at on Google Docs at the latest police report that was posted. It's very detailed. I'm very impressed. I'm curious, before we normally meet, we're gonna meet the second Thursday of every month, but we have everything up to date before we meet, like a couple of days. What I'm saying is, a month prior to everything closed up and ready to go.
Should.
So, we can get a look at it.
Like all your department reports and everything?
Yes.
Like you got on the Google Docs, I put the police report.
Right, police report was there.
You should have them all on there.
Okay, gotta work.
I didn't worry about doing all the minutes and everything on there this time because I know there's several of you that haven't been able to get it set up yet. And so, we're still working on that, but...
Okay, we're going down to Public Works, which will be Mr. Phillips. Does he have any questions? I know you'll have later. Do you have any question for him now? The Fire Department, does he make any question for our department? Okay, in our accounting, we have some things that Luke wants to bring up. Do you want to do those now? We'll wait. Do you want to do the FBI and the CPI now? Then we'll wait on the budget. You be full of it.
All right. Well, we've been working on this for about six months. The Police Department dispatched and been helping us out on this. There were several volunteers that were not reported to LOPE. That being said, now we owe some money on them. It usually is about five dollars a month, however, I believe they are sticking us with some penalties. We are working with one of our LOPE representatives who happens to be here in town. Neil used to be the old fire chief. He's been helping us out with trying to get some of that taken down. Right now, it's in the area of about a hundred thousand.
Penalty?
Penalty. In total, fees for paying for volunteer police departments or volunteer police officers and penalties on, I mean, those are included in that. So, it's all the way back to 1988.
Wow.
Unfortunately, those weren't reported at the time and we're trying to catch it up and get it right. We are also trying to discuss with them the fact that they are, since none of them even are gonna get that benefit, can we at least, you know, meet them halfway or do some kind of deduction on that because, like I said, it's a large number. If they aren't gonna get the benefit, why should we have to pay it in? Kind of one of those deals. Granted, you were supposed to pay it in all that time, but at least if we can get some of those penalties resolved, that's what we're kinda arguing for.
What is what?
I don't know that it stands for basically the police and fire retirement. I don't know what the actual definite or the actual letter stands for.
But Luke is working on that and hopefully we can get that figured out.
Are you in the middle of that also?
I guess I am.
I'm in the middle of that.
But he's working on that. We won't take any action right now on it. He just wants you to be aware of what's going on.
Is the state, is the state, Luke, telling us we are penalized? Is that what you're telling us?
It's the LOPE, I guess, I don't know if they call them.
Or, or commission.
Yeah, they, once they figured, they actually did the calculation, once we reported everything. And that's what we're seeing from anything back from 2010 before, we're being very, we're being penalized. From what I can tell, about fifty dollars a month for each individual.
For each individual?
Yes.
Do we have that under control now?
Yes, we're reporting everything that, as far as I know, we've been reporting it ever since I've been here. We've always had police and fire volunteers and fire has always been recorded. It's just the Police Department that did not have their volunteers recorded in the past. And like I said, the best I can tell, it's from 1987, '88 to 2010, 2009, 2010.
Is there a commission that reviews that, that will make the final decision as to whether we pay the penalty?
Right now, we have Mr. Neil working on taking it. He's actually part of the commission board now. Is that, am I saying that right?
Is he a governor appointment?
I'm not sure who appoints it. But since he, he has a little bit of pull down there and we're open, that he can help us out a little bit.
I think he'll help us continue. I think we just need to get some more police, some police and figure it out.
To clarify what you said, we have to pay in if those individuals are not eligible for any benefits?
Correct.
They don't receive that.
They don't get that.
But, I mean, you're not, but you have to pay in to that fund for some reason why the benefits are, but...
If they were to at some point in time come on to the, like a fire department not be volunteer anymore, that would count towards their service time. And all that, all those years would count towards their service time of going towards their retirement. We have to have a fire chief that retired out early due to that here just recently. He had probably ten years of volunteer time that allowed him to retire before he was fifty, so...
The word, Neil, you keep working on that. May and you probably get involved in it too, so...
But I want you all to be aware, as soon as I find out, I'll let you know.
Any more surprises?
Hopefully not.
I was gonna say, sit down, Luke.
Well, we have ran across some of those from APERS and LOPE all the time, I've seen them, so... It's something that we don't know about until, do they have just...
Did they provide you a census of who we supposedly reported or, you know, like a monthly statement or anything like that?
We didn't have really anything reported for police, that's, that was the, kind of the issue. Whenever we went back and looked at it, we self-reported a lot of it because we just felt it was the right thing to do, didn't actually go back and self-report it. We didn't know we were gonna get hit with all these penalties because since we were self-reporting it, we were trying to be the good steward.
So, basically, it's self-incrimination. I think that's exactly what it is, what you just, we do the right thing and then we get nailed for it.
Okay, you have a question on that?
I got one follow-up question, just off of Mitch's question. He said, I guess he, we pay for people regardless of whether they become firemen or not. So, those who do not become full-time firemen, we still paid in on them. What happens to that?
That is pretty good for them.
LOPE keeps them.
I should, I should say LOPE, not state. Retirement system.
Except for APERS?
Yes, it's very similar to APERS. If someone doesn't stay five years and they're not vested, they get the money back, but everything that we put into it, they get to keep. That's how they fund it.
Government. You're in government here now.
I wonder why it's screwed up.
Okay, Inland.
Okay, next one back.
I said no surprise, Luke.
It's not really a surprise because I knew what's coming, but not really good news either. Inland has requested a CPI increase, cost of living increase for their services. They have, that's built into the contract. We were lucky in the fact that they picked the lowest month, but it is a 2.3% increase. It has gone down a little bit due to fuel surcharges. I believe we are a 2.94% decrease for fuel surcharges, but they are requesting this 2.3% increase for CPI.
Which is?
Cost of living.
It's bill.
The super price of this.
You came back this.
I call it cost of living.
And it is based off a specific CPI index for solidity.
And I have all that information. You guys would like to see all the fun numbers?
So, the tri-ports are gonna go up?
2.3%. That's 2.3%. They are requesting that. It isn't their right to do that. It has to have to be approved by the council.
And if we sign up?
Then we're in violation of the contract.
Would you, I would like to discuss that further. I know you're, a lot of you new here, worked here when the contract was made up and approved, but that is built into that contract.
When would the increase go into effect?
Next month. They actually requested it, but it was too late last month to get it on, but so we didn't put it up.
So, that's gonna be a 2.3% across the board, a rate hike to all the people, these triages have?
It's an increase to their original rate. Am I saying that correctly? 2.3% to their original rate.
Twenty years.
Twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty, I don't know what my track rate is. So, 2%, about twenty bucks is...
The proposed, looks like it's 21, 23. That's about the amount that they're proposing actually. That's before our fuel surcharge. Again, our fuel surcharge will be reset by 2.94%.
We will have to vote on this.
We need a motion.
We will need a motion, put on the table for approval.
We gotta have a motion to discuss that one.
Well, we can have the motion and then we can have discussion.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed 2.3% rate increase for Inland.
I have a motion to approve. Can I hear a second?
I'll sit.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion, please.
Is there anything that the city can do to offset the rate increase? Any help in this?
From the fuel surcharge calculation, that I'm not what I'm aware of.
Time of that contract period, a year or...
They can request one every year, right? Is it every twelve months or is it every year?
It's every year, once a year. Which is a similar provision that was in the previous contract.
To give you an idea of the CPI over the tables that they use, for 2013, the lowest was 2.5, highest was 3.4. This year, the highest was 2.8, the lowest was 2.3, which is what they're requesting. So, they are requesting the lowest CPI that they could.
Is this going to be a yearly motion that we're going to hear?
As long as we experience a national CPI increase.
Any further discussion? I have a motion to approve in a second.
When they agreed on Inland Services, how long was it before we could request for bids for other trash services?
Well, I have a eighteen-year contract.
How far are you going on?
Two years. Yes, we're working on it.
Four years.
This is, in that time period, the first time they have requested a CPI.
This is their first request.
Regarding the question of it being an annual deal, if they request, it can be.
Hopefully, it won't quit.
They didn't ask.
They didn't ask.
Does it indicate that they forgot?
Oh.
They what? They forgot.
Okay, any further discussion on this? I have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor by aye?
Aye.
I want to have a roll call on this.
Brian Herring.
Aye.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Aye.
Mitch Magnus.
Aye.
Johnny Savage.
Uh-huh.
Ryan Oswald.
Aye.
Bill Boswell.
No.
Joel Williams.
Aye.
Dana Taylor.
No.
Isn't up and down vote, so it carries. Okay, we're going into Parks and Mr. Phillips, I think you have a presentation to make.
I do. As y'all have probably seen in the paper, this will be my last council meeting after 26-plus years, so it's been really my pleasure to be here and it's been very rewarding. I've got to meet a lot of the people and there is, and that's one reason why Parks and Rec has been successful up until this time. But I am retiring and the new Parks Director is Chuck Eddington. He will be taking over Monday and hopefully, you know, he can take it to the next level of Parks and Rec and everything like that. When we, I guess you're gonna discuss the budget tonight and he did give you the year end budget. Quarterly Parks and Rec is supposed to give you, I usually am here at every council meeting, but we had a occurrence last year that said that we had to make a quarterly presentation to you. I try to do that and the second, if it's gonna be the second Thursday of every month, we shouldn't be able to give you financials. The Parks Commission voted that, that I could give you the end of the month statements every month even before they approve them. So, that's what you have in front of you there. That is the year end. If you'll see there, we have been receiving $515,700 and this year, we actually are gonna be in the black, four thousand, a little over $4,000. That, that money is, but we'll discuss if we have any questions. Mary Jean and I, we sat down today and I tried to go over the stuff with you. But if you have any questions about it, I'm sure Chuck will be glad to spend some time with y'all. Be here through, through the end of the month and be glad to sit down with anybody that has any questions about the Parks budget and kinda how it works. But it is like all departments in the city, it's pretty reliant on the city to help us and like that. But Chuck will be taking over for me, so I appreciate all of you. A lot of y'all have been here around doing different things and have been very helpful to Parks and Rec over the years and I think y'all will do a great job as council people and persons. And I certainly appreciate the effort that y'all put into it because I realize that it's not an easy job to sit here and go through this and try to, I know that every, every department is important to y'all and to the citizens of Harrison when you, when you need them. So, it's, it's a challenge to try to come up with enough money and I realize there's a lot of times that the money's short, but, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Now, I'll stand up there, say, would you please?
Yeah.
On behalf of the city, appreciate your ears.
Well, thank you.
Okay, we have a housing agency here and I'd like to introduce a young lady over here, Mrs. Shanna Athley, and she is taking over, when you take over housing? How long?
December 1st.
December 1st. So, she is fairly new to housing. And you plan on attending our meetings, all of our meetings?
Yeah.
So, if we have any questions for housing, she'd be glad. Oh, didn't I ask you to stand up? Oh, you're standing up. Oh, she's kinda like my wife, you know? My wife is short and I got her that late today, but we're glad to have you all morning. Okay, we'll get into the committee reports. This should be fairly short unless somebody's in the committee meeting. Committee of Environment, Service and Welfare. You can just say no report, no report, okay. Finance Committee.
No report, Mayor.
Internal Affairs.
No report.
Public Safety.
Is that Mary Jean?
Is that me? Evidently not. No report.
Public Works and Transportation, no report. Resources and Policy.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you all. Okay, we will get into ordinances and resolutions. Mrs. Taylor, Van has something, I think you bring.
Got it.
And that will be to approve 2015 budget. Y'all, there'll be probably a million questions out there since y'all are new, but I'd like to see this budget pass through. We worked on a deal, worked on a bunch of cans. You get it down, could I cut it down some more? Probably, but not without cutting maybe some more personnel. We've already cut one personnel out of that budget. Also, Luke, with those raises in there, he has a payroll to meet and if it's not passed, we will have to back pay. Another little aspect of it is, we will have several more meetings if we don't get it passed. But I'm open to questions and Luke is open to questions and he has, well, it's amended type budget, which will be, it's not exactly the same as the one that I've asked out there. In fact, it's a less of a deficit. I've cut some more out of it.
Here is the summary of the things, items that have changed. I don't know if you all have some questions or don't have a particular budget in front of you. I did bring just a few.
Go one more.
I got two pages here.
I need all three.
We got three pages.
I'll hand this one.
We need three pages each.
Three pages, so here's the three pages. I did bring some additional copies of budgets if you guys don't have.
We need to check all this stuff.
This is one you don't have. So, you just start shooting this one, please.
Costs money.
My skin is, my skin is even.
You've gotta pay that hundred thousand.
He will never receive anything from this table. Sorry. Again, those are just the three pages that changed. You have a few more copies of the full budget if you need to see it. Does everybody have a copy of the budget? Did everybody get one? I think I passed several out.
But we will have, I hope, I'm getting ahead of you a little bit, Luke. You'll get a binder, I hope, if you're reporting, like this, with everything in it, everything you need, I hope. And in the past, in the past, they wanted, wanted the aldermen to lead those budgets here. We're all grown people. We're all grown people and I think I can trust you taking these budgets home, so you take them home with you and look at them.
And I'm not buying another binder.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was something.
That was the only thing we just lost.
We just never had them when we needed them at the meeting.
You could put them out on Google Docs also.
Yes.
But you will get a pre-copy of it, of the budget.
Are we ready to discuss?
We are ready.
Any motion? Think you've got to make a motion?
It's got to be, it's gonna make a motion if we approve the budget as presented.
I have a motion to approve the budget as presented. Can I hear a second?
Sir.
I have a motion in a second. Now, we get into discussion. Okay, there being no discussion.
Oh, hang on.
I thought everybody was being polite.
You're not gonna get off the hook, Eddie. Okay, first of all, Mr. Mayor, I want to compliment you and Luke from taking what had been a 270-some-on-thousand-dollar deficit that we were staring right in the face getting ready to start this year, down to 89,000. That's the way I read that correctly. I think that is, I think that is highly commendable. One of the things that I heard more often than not out on the street during the campaign was the fact we need to get the budget under control. This is a great start because there's no way we were going to do it in one shot without hurting a lot, so this is a great start. What I'd like to see happen, now, now, speaking for myself, what I'd like to see happen in the future is possibly to have some budget committee hearings starting early in the fall, maybe even August, September timeframe. And I would like to see the department heads, two of us as the committee and Mitch as the chairman. And I know this is your budget, but we all gotta work this thing together and I don't want... I don't want to say defend themselves because they've been doing it a long time, that's not my point. It's, maybe, maybe you took better numbers, educate us as to what we're looking at.
True, true. I'm thinking right along with you.
Because it's not a good thing to get a budget on the night of the council meeting to approve, and knowing we have to vote for it, at the same time, we're also having our back to the wall because we got folks that need to be paid, and.
Well, we can, we can still write checks, and this will have increases.
So, and, and I'm not against what we're looking at at all. It's just, I would like to see us get in the habit of having things long before we sit down at the city council.
You're, you're definitely right.
That's, I mean, that's just.
What's the current budget process to that point? I mean, you, who have you basically?
I wanna give it a little past it. We can go back several years. I have sat in on the budget meeting myself, say, ten years ago, and sat down with department heads. Actually, they've been in this roundtable, and you hear what they're talking about, or what they want to attend on, and what, you know, even maybe a rake they need to buy, or the computer they need to buy. You know those things. And, uh, this past year or so, I can't tell you, I've, I've been handling the budget, and I've looked at it just exactly like you have. But you have the right idea, I'd like to see that, those tasks performed in the, in the future, that we all have a roundtable discussion with before we get ahead of the budget. Y'all are totally right on that. It didn't happen this year.
Sure, I understand.
You know, it didn't happen, but something.
Well, it allows you to plan, to be honest, to Wade's point about, uh, equipment and Luke's, uh, comments about having equipment. If you're never looking at this stuff, it just sneaks up on you, and you get two or three of those hundred thousand dollar deals.
Well, I'm not saying, also, I'm gonna add this in. This budget is only something that gives everybody a guideline. You know, it's, it's not gonna be perfect, but we've looked, Luke and I have looked at the revenue side of it too, and there could be a few line items that could change in here. What I like to see is our savings at the end of the year offset our deficit, which we, our deficit would be actually zero, not on the budget, but our actual deficit would be zero.
Right.
And I talked to Luke about that, and that's, I'm having a department head meeting Monday, and that will be one of the discussions we have in that department. Can we save this ninety thousand dollars in this year? I'm not gonna say where our revenues are gonna jump, I hope they do, that's what we all want, is our revenue to jump, but can we save the money within this year to have it zero, but at the end?
I see some line items here that are ten thousand different, a hundred fifty thousand different. What are your plans to, to provide those cost savings in those larger categories? For example, police expenditures.
Okay, police department, I don't know if you looked, the way we got that broken out there. Now, we're tied, in our police department, our budget is tied by a certain percentage. If we, say we set a revenue like this is, close to six million dollars, they automatically get a percentage of that revenue. We can't change that figure whatsoever. That is under that new ordinance. Better not. So, if you raise that to save seven million dollars, you automatically raise that line item on place and fire by a percent. They automatically get that. We're, so we're, I'm not saying we don't need to look at that together. We want them to save money just like we do have our other department. We want them to save money. But that, that number in the place and fire is set by a percentage. Better not.
Is that a bar reward, or is that the sales tax?
Sales, it's part of the, it's part of the sales.
People didn't realize that. Why didn't I sit right over in that seat and go against that? Just because of that. Not that I was against fire and police having the money, it's just it tired our general budget by a percent. That, that, the loop in y'all or anything? Ryan, you?
So, the current process that you go through is basically the mayor and the finance director and?
Number one, it's finance director, then the mayor. Well, I, I don't know, this is my personal answer.
Well, I'm talking about usually. Usually, since I've been here, we've always had the department heads have drawn up a budget. They've given it to me, I put it in a version of this. I then said, kind of laid it before Dan, see what his thoughts, ideas are on it, and he goes through and, and cuts, adds, whatever he wants to do. Once that's done, it then becomes in front of you for approval. And then it's not looked at again until the next year when we have to amend the actual. I can't stand that, but it's what's happened.
We're gonna change that a little bit.
I would, I mean, I would love to amend the budget. If, if we had to every month, that's fine, I wouldn't want to, but, you know, if, if that's what it comes to, and we find something that, look, we have a hundred thousand dollars, we gotta pay. It needs to be put in the budget.
Right.
Okay, you were talking about the penalty and base of the, of the loop, but what fund is that money gonna come out of?
General fund.
That's not in there either.
It's not in here.
It's not in your budget.
Who, what? Who's gonna pay that? I realize it'll wind up being the city, but I wanna know what department is that gonna come out of the police and the fire?
That's yet to be determined, because we don't know.
We don't, we don't know for sure. Until it gets paid out, we can't really make that determination.
Yeah, we don't know, really. We, we've already discussed it now. If I knew, we could take it right out of the police department, we could take it right out of the police department, but I don't know.
The new tax.
That's still in, that's still in.
The new tax puts wrinkle and stuff.
That's what I, that's why I was asking.
So, that's, I mean, that's something we're gonna have to address with the auditors.
When it comes time to pay, will we, will we have to approve that in the head of time?
That'll come back for approval.
At that time, we have to deal budget.
Well, it's an up and down vote. We normally, if we're out of our, out of our expenditures, we might explain that better than I can. If we're totally out of our expenditures, like we got some things that come up like during the year, we'll bring it to council. But just about everything that's over the vote, anything that's in this budget, we'll bring it to the council for approval.
I understand that, I guess what I'm asking though is, will we have to make that approval to adjust the budgets at a time? Because if you're dipping, you hit one of these funds, and they got operating expenses, and you get into that.
We, we do that, well, actually, we've been doing last year's in about two little tracks. All of them.
We do it all at one time, at the, after the end of the year. We, we don't mess with the budget during the year. That's what.
You document, you document throughout the year added expenditures that are of exception to your budget, so that you, the auditors have a record of why you spent that money throughout the year. But then, when the new year, after the, you close out the last year, you guys here in a month or so will get a, a resolution amending the two thousand and fourteen budget. So, you will, but, you will, you will amend the previous year's budget to actual expense.
Is that, is that normal?
Yeah.
It sounds, it may sound like it should be. I mean, it's not that I agree with it, but it's.
Sounds completely normal now, doesn't it?
Well, it's.
Better have enough government, better have enough government.
Yeah, to address your concerns about why we, if you spend, they can't spend past their budget without your approval. You know, if you give a department a certain amount, they can't, if they need to spend, buy a new piece of equipment that went down, that wasn't in the budget, they have to come to you and ask for permission to overspend, basically, on that issue.
I don't, I don't think, of course, I, I understand what you're saying, I don't think the concern is whether or not they would have come to us, I think the concern is we don't want something dipped into their fund that they get hit with, and then later on, they can't, and the other thing that's already been set aside.
Well, they do, that, that does happen, that's a happy and poor bad type thing. You're gonna have things that over, you're gonna have, like, an air conditioner go out or something that's not in it, but you're gonna have, something will probably hit us. I hope it doesn't, but in the norm, it does. It does hit during the year. That's why we got to watch our savings, we got to watch our expenses all, every month during the year, which I don't think we've really, really done that much of.
Luke, are we gonna see a separate line for fire, the tax that goes to the fire and the tax that goes to the police?
Yes.
When are we gonna see that?
I mean, it's already been presented to you in the budget.
Yeah, it's in your budget, in the.
It's right here.
Is it in this one?
Um, yeah, yes. I mean, if you go back, it's actually behind all the general fund departments, there's a fire fund and a police slash dispatch fund, which was approved by the previous council to set up.
Can our monthly spend, in year-to-date spending, get that call off every month?
I try to do it as often as I can, every month, if I can get it done. With it being the first council, you might not see it until committee meetings on the second or third day. Depending on how days.
So, our lag's always usually one month, it's probably.
I'd like to get it done before that, but we don't get state, we don't even know what we get from the state sales tax until the twenty-fifth of the next month, so.
So, they run about a month behind.
As soon as we get that, we try to get it out within five to ten days.
Luke, a quick question, uh, looking at the fire department budget proposals. Twenty-fourteen fiscal year, which is last year, it has a credit on here for LOPD is eighty-one thousand dollars. Is, is that part of the penalty?
No, they do give us a credit, and it's based on prior year savings, I guess, for lack of a better term, and also, I'm trying, I don't deal with LOPD as much as I do APERS, but with, with LOPD, we also are paying for some volunteer fire departments. We pay a high percentage, which goes to pay for volunteer departments around the state, and then we get a credit back from, usually, they don't use all of that money, so we get a credit back.
My question is the credit, is it, can I not wash the penalties? Why?
We've already received all of our credit for one, um, for this previous year. The credits, I mean, if you do that, the credits at that point in time are gonna basically be non-existent. You're gonna see your expenses get extremely inflated because we account for that in our budget. But since we account for that credit, you'll basically see another eighty thousand in expenses if we take that away.
Okay, further question, I know on the note there.
It's evident by everybody asking these questions, we're gonna ask the lean councilman, Taylor, or Councilman Savage, and Mayor for information as we go through this. I was probably, as I went through and highlighted and made notes, you know, a thousand questions would be fifty days. But some of it stands out, like the infrastructure spending is significant this year due to the project on industrial park, but there's not very much scheduled for this year in the budget. Is that normal?
Well, wait, more or less take care of that, but our infrastructure, as I told you earlier, we, we governed by a book that we put out, and this, this one so happened to be a red book, and we, that tax we collect is, we will spend on that red book. I think we got, we're up to about a little bit, we won't spend it unless we got the money in there.
Right.
We won't do the project unless we got the money.
We saved for a bunch of years.
Yes.
Because we knew these projects were gonna be coming up, so we didn't save and not use as much. The general public, you know, did a lot of spending last year, I don't see very much this year, you know?
That fund was cut because of that, those major projects that we did. But we'd saved over two, three years.
Right.
To do that.
Completely understood, I'm just saying that when we get questions, you know, that's one of the things that will be pointed out, you know, we had a lot of projects going on before and have been not doing anything.
Y'all, y'all do not have a red book. Does anybody here got a red book? I have one, and I'd be more glad to loan that book out. I would like to have it back, though, I loaned it out.
I've got one.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's interesting, but you'd be surprised, and we're gonna be working on a new one in two years, or already working on one, but.
We can make copies, we can make copies.
Yeah.
It's printed on the deck.
Man.
I'll put it up on Google.
Okay.
Can we, this is like a little brief history of the red book. It is something that has a bunch of projects in it. We aren't necessarily tied to it, however, this is what was promised to the public. So, if you.
This is part of the infrastructure tax.
If you deviate from that, is the public gonna come back and say, well, now, since you deviated from that, you promised all this stuff, we not, might not necessarily give you the next infrastructure tax? So, can you use some of that for other projects that aren't in the red book? Yes, but be very careful.
I wouldn't want to.
No, I'd be more interested in letting the general public know what we've done already, and what's on the drawing board for the future.
Absolutely.
And not bury it in a red book, but put it out there in the open to say, this is the reason why we can't do this until it's a six million dollar project, we gotta let the fund refurbish itself after we've thanked the industrial park road project.
Wade can talk a little bit more, go ahead, Wade.
I typically try to provide an update to the council at least once a year as to where we stand on all the projects that are listed in there. You know, we talk a little bit about, you know, the list of projects that's in the red book, you know, it's not tied to, it's not actually tied to the, the sales tax ordinance that's passed, but we do try to follow it. But that being said, there are projects that will fall through that are in that book, that aren't gonna happen due to, you know, we can't easily complete the project, or honestly, there were some projects at the wastewater plant that were immediate, you know, regulations changed. You know, there, there's always those types of things, but yeah, as, as far as the main projects that we put out there that people are expecting, that's, that's our first goal, to see all of them. The mayor and I were discussing, he's gonna have to make an address at council meetings, so I'll be putting together, you know, an update on where we stand on the infrastructure fund, and that'll, I'll have all that ready before too long. I have a very large spreadsheet that lists every project and where we stand, whether it's completed, if it's underway, what percentage is gonna happen, and we'll have those ready to go. Relatively soon, we'll get contact with anything that was completed last year. And it is typical to, I guess, spend big for a year or two on projects once you've built the fund up, and then you start knocking out some of the smaller projects for a few years and building that fund back up again. It's, it's no different, I guess, than saving up for the big vacation, you know, and taking five years. And industrial park road is one of those big projects. It costs more to do industrial park road than that tax generates in a year. So, obviously, that's where we've gotten.
Do we get grants to help with some stuff up there?
We do get some, we have difficulty getting grants compared to some other smaller communities around us. But we've got, uh, we got some, I guess you could call it grant money, some state funding to help with some of the overlay projects that were in the red book. We've got some grant money that we're, that's been awarded, and we're working on a project for some sidewalk work up at the heights, moving fantastically slow. So, yeah, we, we try to get any other money besides what's available in the infrastructure to help also there, because, I'm gonna tell you, the, the costs that are in the red book were put in and were developed in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Those costs don't do us a whole lot of good now.
Sure.
You know, a, a, a project that was estimated a hundred thousand dollars back then is easily eight hundred now, depending on the way they estimate it. So, we're, and even on some of the water and sewer projects, we're, we try to shift a certain amount of those out of infrastructure and pay for them with the water and sewer fund, because for me, my personal preference is we go forward with infrastructure, we need to get water and sewer out and dedicate that towards real capital improvements for the city, as in, street work, drainage, stuff like that. I, I personally think that water and sewer needs to be independent of any tax revenue.
I have one other question. The department does not spend all of their money that is budgeted. Does that go back into the?
Oh, yeah.
Into the general fund?
Yeah.
That is returned, okay. Does that include all the departments?
Yes.
Is that true, or, but some are off limits, right? Like, money goes out, it comes back.
It goes into general, I mean, it goes right back to the general fund, it doesn't, I mean, street fund would go in the street, I mean, street department would go in the street fund.
I, I wanted to know. I wanted to know where that might, if it stayed in that department or if it went back into the general fund?
Like, the code enforcement, if he, if there's not as much spent out of there as budgeted, it just rolls back into the general fund accounting, and same way. Street department goes in the street fund. Conservation department goes in the, other than water sewer, sewer treatment, water fund.
There is circumcetter of.
But they, they aren't tied to the department.
John mentioned that he would have a excess. You had, what, $4,000? So did John get to keep that $4,000?
You, I'll tell you. Yes, I'll tell you about the parks and recs before we get to, since you voted, I'll go ahead and mention. Parks and rec is a separate entity in itself. They have a commission and that commission takes care of parks and rec. We do not govern the parks and rec. We do allot them money, but we do not tell them how to run the parks and rec.
We give it to them, we just can't tell them how to spend it.
We haven't for the last 26 years.
With that in mind, with that in mind.
Because John told me that he would have, he wouldn't be spending all of this money, so I was just curious what happened.
Yeah, but with that in mind, though, you're looking at John's budget of, what, right at a million dollars, just over a million dollars? But we're only 500,000 of that, or 50% of that. The other 50% come in range. Everyone else, John's, I mean, or now Chuck, you know, with money, so that $4,000 excess may come from.
Well, we get some from the CATPC.
Sure.
Places.
Okay, let's get back on our budget, can we?
I'll call for a question.
Let me, let me, when we're talking about parks here, just to make you aware of one thing that some of you may not realize. This, this year, we will be, well, you know, the minimum wage is gonna, I'm the only, parks is the only department that is really affected by the minimum wage. It's probably gonna cost us $18,000 more this year than, than it did last year. But because of all the part-time labor that we, now next year, instead of going up a quarter, we're gonna, it goes up 50 cents. So it's gonna cost us $40,000 more next year, and then you're gonna get another, it's gonna cost you another $40,000 for next year. Because it's gonna be another 50 cents, because it's gonna become an 8.50. Now, I'll tell you what has happened in the past. In the past, the council has, the past times that we've had a minimum wage increase, the council has given the parks and rec the additional money. It offset that. I'm just, I'm just informing you of what it is. Now then, my, the commission requires, has required, one, one time in 26 years, we have not made the budget. We have not been even in the budget. One time. And that was the year that had a large increase and had repaired the pool and do a lot of things like that. And it was, we were, started out with a budget of about $40,000 over. And I think Mitch may have been on the parks commission at the time, and we ended up being about $16,000.
$13,000.
Thirty, something. But anyway, I'm just making you aware of that. Because we, the chances of us being, by reducing this $5,000 and then having an $18,000 increase in minimum wage, it's gonna be difficult for us to make our budget this year, be, be in, be in the black this year. So I'm just making you aware of that. And I don't know what the parks commission is, you know, what they'll do, but, you know, but anyway, I'm just making you aware of that, that that's something, that next year, when you start looking at that, just taking by a member that's cost us $18,000 this year, it'll cost us $40,000 more next year.
Okay, we still have a motion on the table. Any further discussion of this motion? That being said, all those are favored by?
Aye.
All of the opposed, same?
Nope.
Record will reflect Dina Taylor as a no, all others yes?
I would like to see those starting in September.
You're right.
Committee meeting or wherever the case may be, and let's get this baby under, all the way down under the floor. I'm game for me, just for not the week.
I, I would also like to see if we can do budget amendments along the way and get those to you so that way you aren't surprised. That would be fun. So that way you aren't surprised coming the year, you guys are, and you won't be because we bring it up at council meetings and committee meetings, but that way you have it in paper in front of you. And I, Dan and I won't stop looking at the budget either. I mean, we, we look at it throughout the year, and we're always trying to think of different ways to lower expenses. It's hard to increase revenues because we don't control them.
Although on a quarter, we face.
It's a good, I mean, it's a great start. I mean, from where we were, when Mitch and I looked at it two months ago, and we like to both have a corner to rest, to where we are today, it's, it's gone along with it. So I'm okay with that. There's lots of things down the road that, you know, we want to discuss, but I think we owe it to our employees to have this thing in place if it doesn't count. We gotta take care of that, too.
Thank you all. We'll get into old business. It may be real, real old, but talking about the Hoops and Home Run. I've talked to hospital today, and they are hoping to start cleaning up all that area down there first of February. They're, they're in the process, I think, of one lien, they're trying to clean up. We waited a long time for it. It's gonna be a positive for our city. They're gonna build where they have the rendering or some, their ambulance rods down there and housing down there. It's gonna be great. There's the pond shop and the two-story facility building next to the pond shop. They're still negotiating on that building. That's not part of that cleanup yet. It's just where the Hoops and Home Run are now.
Their, their hospital.
Hospital will own it.
They're gonna clean it up?
Yes, and they're gonna clean it.
Do we have any sort of environmental issue over there that we know of? I mean, I, I'm.
They're taking care of that.
That's the hospital for you.
We, we don't see this not happening.
Can we see drawings of that new hospital?
Well, I'm just giving it away. Well, they don't really have a rendering as such of the building. What I got today was what they were laying little names going on.
We have no trouble with that, I'm curious.
No, but I, believe you me, it'd be a plus.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be a great plus for the city.
And nothing against the folks that's got the pond shop, if they can take that whole corner over, and rest it up, that'll be good.
All that is in negotiation. Okay, get into new business. I have, you know, every year, the mayor has to make appointments and different commissions and their terms expire and all that stuff. And throughout the year, I, we have some parks commission things that will be, and I'll be bringing to the council the different, Oak, Oak's own same names, I can't tell you exactly where they're appointed, because I haven't looked at those. We have a planning commission that I want to bring up tonight, and we have two, we have three spaces on there, open. Mr. Mike Norton and I would like to reappoint Mr. Mike Norton. He is the chair of the planning commission. He has agreed to stay another four years. Another gentleman in here tonight, Michael Hoffman, Mr. Michael Hoffman. If you stand up, Mr. Hoffman. This gentleman works at FedEx, and if you wanna kind of introduce yourself and give kind of, just a brief background, not long.
Very good. Well, thank you all. An honor to be asked by the mayor to serve on the planning commission. My name is Michael Hoffman. I've lived in Harrison coming up on 11 years. I spent 10 of those working at FedEx Freight, where I manage the team that is responsible for repair and maintenance of all our company facilities across the country. However, prior to moving to Harrison, I lived in Denver, Colorado, where I worked as landscape architect, urban designer, working for clients who were developers essentially, so have some experience with zoning, design guidelines, urban design, things of that nature, a great area of interest for me still. And I'm just excited to serve Harrison and then excited for the potential growth that the city has. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
He working on power?
No, he works.
Okay. He's a south guy?
He, he's much closer to the senior manager.
Hoop, hoop for that?
Okay, and I would like to put this to the table and entertain a motion to approve these two gentlemen to the planning commission.
A motion for second.
Get that. Okay, we have a motion in second and further discussion.
Did you say we had three slots open on the planning commission? So you still got one?
Still have one.
I'm just making sure.
And I did not, I went asleep. If that's all the mistake I made this week, I'm, I'm real happy. Wade called me on that and said, oh, we still got another slot open. I said, oh, me. I said, anyway, okay, all of the third by?
Aye.
All of the opposed, same? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna get into two appointments that, and the mayor makes these appointments. The mayor, I don't want them to be political appointments. They're not really appointments or something that's within our city, but the mayor puts in, puts them in a position. And that being the police chief and fire chief. The police chief will be Mr. Paul Wood. Our fire chief, Mrs. Linda DeWalt has done an outstanding job as interim fire chief, and I like to praise her for being the interim fire chief. I have made a decision to appoint to that post, Mr. Marvin Hoffman, and he will take that position February 1st. Mrs. DeWalt will stay in her interim fire chief position till February 1st.
Does she revert back to her position on fire?
She will. She'll revert back to, I believe, what captain? And, and I praise her for what she's done for the city.
You good with that?
I want to say it's been an honor. I, I've learned a lot, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. And those are two, we don't vote on. Those are being, those I'll be appointing. All right, thank you all for that. My comments, it's been an interesting first week. Someone asked me the other day what I've done and what I've accomplished, but the only thing I've been doing this whole week is kind of running my mouth, so he had to send me my, kind of choked just a little bit. Our city is moving forward, and Christine and I are happy to welcome anybody in our office. And I've had a lot of visitors this week, and I hope to continue to have those visitors. I'm learning too. I'm learning too, and I appreciate the people of Harrison. I appreciate our employees, and I appreciate the council. That's all I have to say. I'll open up to the floor if any of our guests or anybody would like to say anything.
I just want to introduce myself.
Matthew, we got two seconds.
Did you walk, did you walk here?
No, I did not walk, I did walk here. There's steps I had to come up. Wade, you're wasting my time, sir. Matt Bell, executive director of the Harrison Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've spoken with most of you, a couple of you I have not. We're in charge of the 1% prepared food tax and the 3% lodging tax within the city limits of Harrison. We use those funds to bring tourists to the city. We're an economic engine. We feel that we've done a really good job to date, and encourage you to stop by 200 West Stevenson Street if you have any questions, want to get a little bit more education in regards to tourism and what we have to offer. Dina Taylor and Brian Herring are both your city council reps on our board. In the event that I won't be present in a meeting, I'll try to make sure that they're up to speed with the way things are going in the office. Should you have a question in my absence, I will try to be as many of these as I can. But like I said, I'm always a phone caller or a walk-in away.
And I know where I live.
And you know where I live, so. Doors wide open. Any feedback is, is greatly appreciated. Any ideas, always welcome, so, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, I'll ask the council, if anybody on the council had anything more to bring up. Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Have a motion in second?
Second.
Okay, all of, again, stay here. Adjourn.